All right, we got you.
All right, that sounds good.
Yeah, you ready to go, Tony?
I'm ready.
I moved at the board of, that the Board of Selectmen vote to open the April sixteenth, two thousand twenty Board of Selectmen meeting.
Seconded.
Motion made in second.
Hi, Josh.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Josh, enter a aye.
Mark telling it aye.
But you love on aye.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I can jump in real quick before we get started on the agenda?
Go ahead.
Uh, so for everyone on the call, thank you for jumping on. We are gonna take questions at the end during Citizens Forum. There's a chat function on Zoom. You just wanna put your questions in there and we'll get to them during the forum. And if for some reason we have to end the meeting because of a, a, a Zoom bomb or a, you know, it gets hacked by any reason, I will quickly put together a new invite and post it on the Town Hall Facebook page. Um, and just jump back on, it might take a couple of minutes, but um, just wanted to put that out there. All right, go ahead.
Um, you're, Tony, you're set?
Yes.
Uh, meeting notices are officially being posted uh, on Nahat.org. Annual Town Election has been postponed until Saturday, June twentieth, two thousand twenty. You can purchase your Beach Pocket stickers uh, on Nahat.org. Uh, I entertain a motion from Josh to approve the minutes of the February sixth.
Um, okay, uh, before we do that, uh, Tony, I didn't know if you wanted to flesh out the, uh, meeting notices being officially posted on Nahat.org and all?
Sure, um, so I think it was honestly, I've, I've lost track of the days at this point, to be honest, but I think it was the last Board of Selectmen meeting that, um, the board voted uh, in favor of making our community calendar, or actually our town website, an official posting location for meeting notices for all committees. So ever since we, um, shut public buildings, we've, by open meeting law requires you to add two meetings, uh, spots, and ours has been the outside board and the inside board at Town Hall. And, you know, given that the building has been closed and people can't get in, uh, we've been putting the notices on our website, on the community calendar. So, um, it's, it's, uh, first, you know, it's, it's evolved, obviously with change. We're learning, we're learning things on our, uh, as we go. It started off with free conference calls and that was more or less a disaster because they couldn't handle how much call volume, um, communities across the state and beyond were using that, that system. So then we got a Zoom account. And then, uh, the PDFs of the notices were being posted onto the calendar because we were still working in the building. But the public wasn't there, so we were actually printing them, scan, uh, adding the conference call and number, stamping them and putting the PDF up on the website. Um, but then, uh, it evolved from there to, um, not working in the building anymore. Now the, uh, even staff in the building are, are working from home. Uh, so we have, um, what we, what we're, the most recent fix was that we've been able to put the link to the Zoom account on the community calendar versus just a PDF and then someone having to copy and copy, you know, that really long link with a bunch of letters and characters into their web browser. So now the link is on the, on the calendar, you can just click on it. Uh, so it's a little bit more user friendly. But, um, Carol, the interim town clerk, doesn't have a scanner at her house, so, um, she, we're, we're still working on that, we found an app. Uh, she actually has a flip phone, um, so the app wasn't gonna help us out on that one, but she's doing a good job, she's working hard at it, and so she's verbally approving, uh, through email, not verbally, but through email approving the notice and sending it to the webmaster for the posting. And then she's printing and stamping the other one and tacking it into the outside uh, meeting board at the Town Hall. So, um, there were some questions that we received about, um, you know, where's the meeting notice? Has it been approved? When was it posted? That sort of thing. We're doing our best to get it up. Everything is, we're still adhering to the forty-eight hour notice rule, we have to. But, uh, you may not see the stamp on the notice that's on the website, but it is stamped and on the, on the notice that's on the outside, outside board. And we are, uh, adhering, you know, making committees adhere to the forty-eight hour notice. And, and generally speaking, we're trying to only have one committee meeting a night at this point, uh, to try to help with, um, people having the opportunity to call in to as many meetings as we'd like to.
All right. Thanks, thanks, Tony. And, um, Mr. Chairman, um, if you don't mind, I wonder if we, um, are we gonna have a Corona update, uh, Tony, or do you wanna do that in your town administrator report?
We could start off that way, we have, um, Deb Murphy, the health nurse, and John Kulan, the health agent here, on this call, so we could start with a coronavirus update.
I just thought there might be some folks on the phone that are waiting specifically for that. So if that's okay with the chairman, um, I'd be in favor of that.
I'm fine, Mark, you okay with it?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah, go ahead, Tony.
Okay, um, so, well, right now, as, as of today, or since the beginning of, um, the coronavirus pandemic, the town has had twenty-five cases. Twenty of them are currently in isolation or, or active. Fifteen of those are in the Jesmond. So, you know, we've, I know, I know we get a lot of calls, uh, from people looking for information about who has it and, um, you know, identifiable information about people that have tested positive. We, we actually cannot provide that information. The State Department of Public Health does not allow us to provide identifiable information, and especially communities of our size. So anything about gender, age, address, you know, we can't put that out there. We, it took a while, uh, for us to, um, become comfortable with announcing the number of, uh, patients, um, that have tested positive at the nursing home, at the Jesmond Nursing Home. You know, given that, um, it's such a, um, sensitive situation there, and I think most people understand what's, what, uh, where the, you know, similar situations like that are occurring around the state. We felt, I feel comfortable putting that information out there. When this started, uh, with the Jesmond Home, oh, Deb, you're gonna have to, I don't even, I don't even know anymore, uh, when it all started, but I can say that immediately, uh, you know, first of all, when the pandemic began, procedures went into place immediately of locking down nursing homes to visitors. So before we even had a positive case in there, you know, procedures were in place for protective, uh, equipment, protective gear for the nurses, and isolation, uh, of the patients, and no visitors being allowed in the building. But when we got our first, our first case, uh, we immediately jumped on the phone, um, as much as we, you know, I, I've, I've been saying it, you know, when I say a hundred calls, I don't even think I'm exaggerating, um, between all of us with, through, you know, Deb, John, uh, with the nursing home directors, with folks at the State Department of Public Health, uh, with folks at the National Guard, with folks at the State Epidemiology Department, um, trying very hard to get, uh, all patients tested at the nursing home regardless of symptoms. And when that started, the governor's guidance hadn't really come out yet. It was still, the, the, the State Department was still in the mode of only test those who have symptoms, and we were pushing really hard about, you know, given the circumstances of the, of the, of the, of the nursing home, um, that it was important to understand, you know, regardless of symptoms, where in the building, you know, the coronavirus existed, um, as best as we could. So we pushed really, really hard and, um, prior, again, prior to the governor changing his guidance, we were able to get the National Guard to come out and test eighteen patients. While we were still pushing for the entirety of the, of the building, eighteen was a, a vast improvement from earlier that day when they were only planning on testing five. Uh, so we got them, so they came in, they tested eighteen, and then as the results of those eighteen started to roll in, it really, I think, started to paint the picture for the state as to how important it was. So they came back out maybe two days later and tested the remaining patients, all patients in the building regardless of symptoms. So all patients now have been tested. I'll let Deb talk to, if we have, I, I think we have all results of those tests at this point. And we're pushing to get the staff tested as well. I don't know, Deb, maybe you have an update as to testing of the staff there?
So, um, the National Guard did come and, uh, test all of the residents of the nursing home, but not the staff. And so, um, the National Guard will not be coming back, uh, to do any testing of all staff. At this point in time, any staff that, um, are exhibiting any symptoms will notify their, uh, PCP and the testing will go through the route that most of us would have to take right now if we wanted to be tested. So that's been working out. Some of the staff have been tested. Some have tested negative, which is great, uh, and there have been a couple that have tested positive, so they're of course out of work. We have received all of the results back from the National Guard, uh, except for two tests. And, um, I tried, I re, did reach out. It's interesting, when the National Guard does the testing, um, they take all of the swabs to the Hinton Lab in Boston. And, uh, as you can imagine, that's the state lab, they are really, really busy uh, right now with all of the nursing homes across the state that they're testing. So I di, I was able to reach out to some, um, people through DPH today because I really wanted to get those last two, uh, tests in so we could have the whole building accounted for. And, um, anyway, I just heard from them a couple of, uh, minutes ago before this meeting, and those results will be forwarded to me in the morning, and then we'll have them. The good news is, um, we have, uh, thirty-three negative tests for the residents there, which, yeah, I was amazed that we would have, um, that many negatives, especially because of the, you know, the age group and the vulnerability of that patient population. But I do have to say, uh, like Tony said, even, the good news is, even before this, the governor had put into effect a no visiting rule, um, across the state. So none of the, uh, nursing homes were, were allowing visitors. So the only people that were coming in and out of the nursing homes are really other staff that are working there. You know, it's unfortunate, very unfortunate for the families, uh, and for the staff, and for the residents, who, you know, many of them have dementia, and it's, it's very, very, very difficult situation in these nursing homes. And I will say though, working with the Jesmond staff, um, you know, working with the fire and the police, getting them all the supplies they needed, all of the equipment with, um, our Mema group, and everybody cut, really came together quickly, uh, to make sure that all of those staff had everything they needed. And just to have thirty-three patients test negative, I think that's real tribute to the hard work that everybody in that building, um, is really doing. And, and you have to understand too, for, for staff to keep coming back every day and putting themselves in that environment with so many positive patients. I mean, that, that's pretty remarkable, and, um, I don't know if, if people saw the appreciation parade that they had at one o'clock today, but, um, that was really, you know, for the people in the hot to, the fire and the police and all of us to say thank you to them. You know, for the, for the tough job that they're doing right now. So hopefully we'll get those other two results in the morning. And, um, we're monitoring, of course, daily, um, not just the people that tested positive, but the people that tested negative, just because they're in that environment. And so, uh, we need to make sure that they don't develop symptoms. I'm not saying that they couldn't, because again, there's always a two-week quarantine period. But, uh, the staff are doing a great job monitoring their temperature, their vital signs, all the staff that are coming to work, having their temperatures taken before they enter into the building. So that's what we're doing right now, we're doing really intense monitoring. And, um, we'll just have to really wait for the two weeks to pass to see where we, what the end result is.
I wanna just address some of the comments in the chat, um, about, um, not notifying the town about the National Guard being there for testing. And, and, and that sort of thing, I guess, you, you have to understand that even technically, you know, the, the State Department of Public Health has not even authorized us to, announce the Jesmond right now. You know, we're technically being, we're being advised right now not to, not to publicize the address of positive patients. It's unique here because, you know, clearly we got a lot of, um, press today about how many cases we have for such a small town. And so I feel like it's important for us to provide this information, to provide some clarity to the residents that, you know, a bulk of the, of the cases are in that one building. So just, I want you to know, um, that, you know, it's not that the town was trying to keep this information from anybody, it's that technically, we're not allowed to provide any type of information like that. And further, you know, like I said earlier, the, the focus or the priority over the last week has been trying to get, you know, testing done, trying to get supplies, you know, really vote, the response really was on, trying to help out the folks in that building as much as possible. So, um, you know, we are, we, we, we have created a hotline, we've created a, a website, we're putting the total case numbers on that website. You know, every time we get a new case, we're putting it up right away. So we're doing our best to get as much information out there to the public as possible. And just want, you know, to reiterate the fact that it's not, it's not a, uh, it's not an issue about, you know, covering anything up or anything like that. It's, it's, we, we, we're not allowed to provide certain type, types of information in, but we are trying to give, give the public as much as possible. Um, and then I'll also say that, um, all families of the patients there, uh, we've been told through the director at the nursing home has been, they've all been communicated with. And, 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 you know, that was an important thing that Deb and I, uh, raised with the nursing home is that the families, um, are aware of what's going on. Other than that, we, you know, we have, uh, pretty much we've closed, closed all parking lots, closed all playgrounds. Lynn and Swanscott have, uh, put in an order that you're required to wear a mask when entering an essential business. So for all Nahat residents, you know, if you're going across the causeway for groceries or anything, um, going into an essential business in, in Lynn or Swanscott, you wanna make sure you bring a mask with you. For us, we don't have, we didn't put that, we, we're urging folks in the hot to wear a mask at all times when they leave the house and to try not to leave the house as much as possible. We, uh, have provided PPE, uh, equipment to, uh, the staff at both Seaside Variety and Seaside Pizza. And there's limits on who can enter the building, how many people can be in the building, and how far away from each other they have to be. You know, the, the, those places of business are so small and so limited that it's, doesn't quite, uh, reach the same level as like the grocery stores and liquor stores that you'll see in Lynn and in Swanscott. So we're, instead, we're just really urging people to make sure that they, uh, do their part and, um, be masked when they're on the public, and not even just in a business, but walking around town or, um, just being out and about. Also, our, our public spaces, our trails, our fields, our, our beaches are all, uh, open for passive recreation only. You know, people shouldn't be sitting and sunbathing or, um, you know, in groups, of course. Uh, it's really for leaving, we're really leaving those, those spaces open so that people can, uh, for their mental and physical health, get outside and, um, but do it in an appropriate way and, um, just maintain their distance from other people. It, I, I gotta say that, you know, the response, I think, from the public, from what, you know, I've heard from the fire department, from the police department, from selectmen, from, from everybody. I mean, the response has been, has been really positive in the hot, and I think a lot of residents are doing a great job, um, wearing masks and, and, um, so many people have reached out to, uh, volunteer, you know, to help out in any way possible. So, um, do you, John, do you have any update you wanna provide?
Looks like John.
Let me, let me unmute you. There you go, John.
Okay, good, thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to commend the owners of Seaside Variety and Seaside Pizza for their level of commitment to, uh, comply with, uh, common sense and, uh, lawful, um, uh, limits, uh, imposed by, uh, the governor and, uh, uh, Town Board of Selectmen and Board of Health. Without, uh, their commitments, uh, this, uh, this would not work. They have, uh, initiated, uh, measures, uh, on their own, and, uh, I have conversations with them, uh, frequently, and, uh, uh, they tell me of things they have in mind, uh, to, to enhance. And, uh, they, they have done an excellent job of, uh, self-policing. Their level of compliance, of course, is, uh, dependent upon the, their customers, their customers' willingness to, uh, to go along with the markings on the floors and the, uh, limits, uh, for inside, because in, in both, uh, establishments, there is, uh, very, uh, small, very limited, uh, uh, square footage on the floor. And without the, uh, first direction of, of the management and ownership, and followed by the compliance of the customers, uh, this just would not work. So, uh, hats off to them. And, uh, the, uh, the, the level of compliance at the other, uh, establishments, uh, staying closed, uh, has been very good, uh, as well. That's all I have for now.
I just wanted to add a couple of words mainly about the Jesmond, um, to, to what Debbie, uh, Deb and, uh, Tony added. But, um, you know, I know there's been concern about, um, the high rate of infection in the hot, uh, you know, fifteen of those twenty-five have been in the Jesmond. You know, that's a, that's fully sixty percent of all the positives, uh, in the hot. And, uh, you know, it's really unfortunate that, um, forty-nine or whatever the current population is of the Jesmond that, uh, you know, really constitute, uh, our most vulnerable, um, population. And unfortunately, they're all living under one roof. And, uh, Deb alluded to the, um, tribute that was paid today. I live adjacent to the Jesmond, so I've got a front row seat, but, um, the, the Nahat Police and, uh, Public Works and Fire Department and State Police and Lynn Police put on kind of an impromptu salute parade to the, the workers there at the Jesmond, which was very heartwarming. Uh, I can't imagine how difficult it is to go into work, uh, into a building that you know is, is, is or, or hopefully was, uh, you know, contaminated with this virus. So, uh, it's really impressive that, you know, those caregivers are going in knowing they're putting themselves at some jeopardy, so, um, hats off to, to their dedication.
And Tony?
Yeah.
I just, I just wanted to bring up one more thing too, and that's about, um, I did receive a few calls this morning. And one of them was related to all of our, uh, residents that are coming home now from Florida. And, um, on March twenty-seventh, the governor did put a new regulation into effect that anybody coming back into the state had to go on a two-week quarantine. So, um, what I said to this person was, well, I can certainly send people quarantine paperwork. I can email it to them, or I can deliver it to their mailbox if they don't have, um, an email, but I have to know, uh, who they are. I don't have a list of people that, um, you know, that come back to Nahat. So I spoke with Linda Peterson today, and she has a distribution list of, um, several hundred people. So I put together, um, um, just a statement for her to email, uh, to all of her, uh, people on that distribution list, many of whom she said will be coming back or have been coming back this week. Uh, with my email in my phone so that if they get in touch with me, I can certainly forward them that information. And also, and I put this in that statement as well, Linda has volunteers who can help those people that are on quarantine with their grocery shopping. And if needed, she could put them on the daily, uh, lunch, uh, list. So it's really important that, um, and I think we have a, you know, a fair number of people that come back, that those people, because they've traveled, do quarantine for that two-week period, for many, for many reasons that we, that we already know about.
And you're also working with, I'm sorry if you said it, but you're also working with Linda that counts on aging, right? And to help get that information out?
Right, that's, yes, she's the, she's gonna send it out to everybody for me.
Uh, we also had a comment on the, in there about a town notice, um, you know, to publicize that, that information you just read off, Deb. And I'm saying, yes, you know, we're probably gonna do a robocall tomorrow night. We'll make sure that's included there, and we'll also post it on the, uh, COVID nineteen and our website and Facebook. You know, I'm, another comment I'll make is, you know, Deb, uh, is, um, you know, constantly on the phone, um, you know, when we get a positive case. So just yesterday, the State Department created a website announcing, um, providing information about cases in each municipality where, before yesterday, they weren't even doing that. It was just by county. That's how sensitive this information is. Uh, so they finally were able to, um, become a little bit, um, more comfortable with providing information to the public and, and created this page. So many times we'll get a positive, uh, or not many, but it has happened where we've gotten a positive case because the patient has a residency, uh, a resident address in the hot. And Deb will call those, will reach out to the patient and find out that they, you know, are technically, they, they don't really live in the hot, they, they have a home address here, but they're living with a, a, a partner or, uh, you know, or somewhere else, they have a, uh, a partner or, uh, you know, or somewhere else. They have an apartment somewhere else outside of town and they haven't been in the hot. So, you know, the state number doesn't always, doesn't always equal the same number that we have because Deb then goes and does a little bit more of an investigation. And, you know, she's then also reaching out to all the contacts of those patients. She's checking in daily with everybody that is either in isolation. So a couple of key terms here that Deb yells at me every time because they get them wrong. Uh, but someone who tests positive is put in isolation. Anybody that comes in contact with that patient, um, is put into quarantine, right? So Deb's reaching out to those positive cases that are in isolation, plus those that are in quarantine. But you can imagine, you know, the, how that branches off to how many people that hits. So she's, you know, I get the phone bill that Deb, uh, she's making a million calls a day, uh, reaching out to, you know, people checking in, making sure they're doing okay and seeing if they need anything and, you know, it's, um, she's working around the clock. So I, a lot of kudos to you, Deb, for all the work you're doing.
Thanks, Tony.
That's all I have really for the COVID update unless there's any, um, any other comments or questions from the board.
None from me.
I have, I'm all set, Tony. I just wanna pass along what you, echo what you said and thanks for all the, uh, frontline, um, employees, um, with doing all the work they're doing and you included.
I have no questions, Sean. Good job.
All right, so, um, should we return back to new business?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll get back to new business. Josh, um, line up two, yeah, the minutes of the meeting?
Yep. Uh, I moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the meeting minutes from February 6th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Seconded, Mark Cullen.
My, uh, it's been, um, a second, further discussion? This is a roll call vote. Why don't we just yell out name and just, uh, you know, you're approved.
Okay, Josh Antrim, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Richie LaBott, aye. Next.
I moved, that, yeah, I moved at the, uh, Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minute meeting, uh, excuse me, the meeting minutes, uh, from April 2nd, 2020.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Roll call vote.
Josh Antrim, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Richie LaBott, aye. Next, Mark?
So I think it's Josh.
Uh, no, it's, um, the Board of Selectmen, uh, a minute, okay. Josh, Josh, I'm sorry, Josh.
Yes, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 9, I moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to postpone the annual town meeting from May 16th, 2020 to Saturday, June 27th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Uh, Mark Cullen, second.
Uh, discussion? All those in favor, uh, in favor? Roll call vote again.
Josh Antrim, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Richie LaBott, aye. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Tony?
Do you want me to give a little, uh, background on that?
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
So legislation passed that allows municipalities to postpone, uh, annual town meeting. Uh, that's also, we also, um, legislation passed as well to allow for towns, the Board of Selectmen, to approve, uh, one-month budgets. We have to go beyond July 1st, um, up to three consecutive months. And then potentially, you know, if we needed to have a meeting in September. So we tossed that idea around for a while, but we, you know, communicated with a lot of other communities, uh, in the area. Many are postponing to June so that if this pandemic, um, frees up a little bit, we might, we may be able to, uh, we may be able to, uh, host a town meeting in June. So for now, we're postponing to then, to hopefully be able to take advantage of that date. However, it may be a scenario where we are only, um, you know, taking up the omnibus budget or the required articles. Should we, uh, still be in a, uh, living in a, in a world where we, you know, are, can't put 400 people in one room? And then save the rest of the articles for, uh, the fall? Or, uh, we could do all of it in June, you know, the entire warrant. Or, like I said, uh, postpone to September and just have the Board of Selectmen, uh, vote one-month budgets for July, August and September. It's a lot of work, uh, the, so there's a couple of things that, that else, I'll, I'll add to that too is, it's not just, um, can we put 400 people in a room in June? Uh, we, you know, there's a lot of prep work that goes into that meeting that happens a month prior. Uh, and, you know, working, uh, doing the day-to-day business that we're doing right now is difficult under the current circumstances just because of, um, you know, working from home and, and committee meetings being like this and things like that. But, uh, also, um, there's a lot of uncertainty about what, you know, what revenues we can expect in the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, whether that be, you know, our own, um, non-taxable revenue like fees, uh, or, um, revenues from the state. Um, obviously, you know, a lot of, uh, sales tax, a lot of meals tax, things like that, uh, are, are down because people are at home. So that's, that's part of, part of the, uh, some of the considerations that we're looking into about, you know, when we, when we have the meeting and when we vote on our budget. So, uh, for now, we'll postpone to June and hopefully we'll be able to, to put everybody, get everybody, we'll be back to normal. We'll get everybody together and have a great meeting and be able to take up, uh, uh, our entire warrant like we typically do in the spring. Or maybe we just take up the, you know, the omnibus budget at a, at a lower amount of, uh, uh, a, a smaller quorum level. Or we postpone to September and we do one-month budgets. Also on the phone is, um, uh, Dan Scrip, Town Council, if you'd like to say thing, say something on that. As well as, uh, I'll, I'll unmute our, our, um, town moderator, Dave Collins on the phone as well.
Yeah, the new legislation gives Dave the ability to, uh, start a meeting, uh, say for example, on June 27th and then hold just one or two articles, um, to, on the floor and then suspend the meeting for, in, in periods of 30 days. So that really empowers Dave to do a lot of things to make sure that if this pandemic is still in existence and if the state emergency is still, still active, then we can get some business done, but then move forward at a later date. That's a very strong, uh, power that Dave now has.
As we all know, I crave power, so that feels good to me, uh, but, I think we're just gonna have to work it out as a group as to what, how, what and how much we'll take on at that meeting. But I'm, I've cleared my calendar and the 27th of June will be fine and we will carry it forward. And, uh, I'm sure we'll do a good job of it. If it turns out we have to postpone it again, we can do it. But, uh, I'm hoping that by that time, things will be much brighter and much more predictable. So I'm very happy with the postpone of the election and also the postponement of town meeting. And, uh, by, by the way, you don't have to worry about my budget. I'll be able to stretch that out, okay?
You're in a, you're an essential, uh, essential piece to the, to the, to the budget and to the meeting, so. There's a question, I did get, there's a question here. Is it possible to add a non-binding referendum for or against eminent domain on the ballot for the June election? So, um, Dan, I, I'll answer, you correct me if I'm wrong. So as far as the ballot goes for election, it's set at this point. Nothing can be added to the ballot, nothing can be removed. Um, that deadline passed a while ago. So the ballot for the town election is set. Um, as far as the warrant goes for town meeting, the town bylaw date for citizens petitions, uh, articles has passed. Um, however, the Board of Selectmen have, um, the authority to open and close the warrant. Uh, so warrant articles can, can still be added through the Board of Selectmen. Dan, did I miss?
No, that's right. You're right on. The ballot, the ballot for the elections is frozen. We, that cannot be changed. Um, the only thing that changes in terms of the ballot is the date. Uh, everything else is frozen and, uh, you're, you're right, we're, we're beyond the time for citizens petitions. Now it's up to the discretion of the Board of Selectmen to add anything that they want to at this point.
Okay.
Uh, Tony, it's, it's Mark, um, Cullen. Uh, I'm sure you're working closely with the Finance Committee on this and, uh, making sure the timing of the, uh, warrant and, um, the mailing of their booklet and all of that is in agreement with the, uh, the new date for the 27th?
Yes, yep. Uh, so actually we have a meeting with the FinCom. I, I think they're gonna try to meet next week. Uh, they were pushing for Tuesday, but it might, might get pushed to Wednesday. I'm not sure. But, um, yeah, we're working with the FinCom, so there'll actually be two separate warrants. One warrant for the election, which will come out, you know, 14 days, so June 6th, it has to be posted by. And then the following week would be the wa, the posted of the, the posting for the warrant for the town meeting. Uh, I'll say that, you know, if Carol was here, uh, she would be putting a, uh, a notice out there that, um, you know, this year we're, we're gonna need, uh, help with election workers. You know, given the coronavirus situation, we're gonna probably try to move the elections upstairs in the town hall and have a, uh, one entrance point and one exit point and really limit how many people are going through the building, going through the building at the same time so that, uh, we can keep as much social distance as possible. So we may need a couple of extra volunteers. If you want to reach out to Carol Nelson, her email is, uh, cnelson@nahat.org, uh, to help with the, with the elections.
Oh Fred, this is you. Uh, see you call when you have a chance.
All right, um, moving on to the next.
Hey Tony, one minor thing?
Yeah.
The election ballot is seven days' notice. Just so you know, so folks aren't expecting it any sooner than that.
Seven days' notice on that, on the warrant being posted?
On the election, annual election warrant.
Okay. Okay. All right, um, the next on the agenda under new business is the boat launch discussion.
I wonder if we could, um, take the Memorial Day Parade discussion for the boat discussion because that discussion might affect the boat discussion. Would that be okay?
Yes, we have Molly Conlin on the, on the call as well. If, um, Molly, you wanna start? Uh, let me unmute you. Here we go. Hold on. Okay, you there?
Yep, I am.
All right.
Uh, we talked a little while back about the possibility the parade might not even go on. These, uh, kids have to come in buses and, and, uh, school's out. So, um, uh, the possibility of doing a motorcade kind of thing with the veterans and, and, uh, the auxiliary and the, um, the police and fire and, um, town officials if they're, they're welcome, but, um, I don't know how much and when we need to decide that. So, uh, the other, the other thing is if we did a motorcade, I can, um, the, we wouldn't go down to the wharf. Maybe we could have, uh, one car with one person go drop the reef at that time to, you know, post stuff, uh, along the way. And, uh, at the end of the parade, have one person raise the flag at noon. Uh, my other concern was Gettysburg Address. Can we get ahold of the school to see if they, some type, how can have, choose a child and then have them do it on the website or something? Cause, uh, that's not gonna be able to happen in the cemetery. So those are the things we're thinking about. Uh, the wharf, I don't know if the boats would make a difference. I don't, I, I really can't see this parade going on as usual as a parade. But, um, I don't know, it's all up in the air.
Yeah, I think that we're, we're definitely looking at a different style of a parade, um, if we do anything at all. Um, it's, you know, of course, it's, it's, it's tough. Um, we get, it's such a popular day. It's, you know, so many people come out and, um, I remember last year, you know, there, there were so many people at the cemetery for that Gettysburg Address and at the wharf and, you know, it's, it's a tough situation that we're in that we have to be considering something different. We'll still be putting flags up at the cemetery.
Uh, that, that was my question. I, I, uh, the, the school kids used to help. I don't think that's gonna happen, but maybe the auxiliary could somehow, now we can talk before with the auxiliary and with us to help with masks on and social distancing and all of that to help put up the flags. I did get the last order of 500 flags from before they stopped sending them out, so that's a good thing. We have plenty of flags and markers. But, uh, that's a big day too, is to decorate this, the flag. So.
Could you make some American flag masks for us?
I could.
I know you have that talent. I know you can sew.
Actually, I am gonna drop a bunch. You had talked about, uh, I'm gonna drop a mo, I've been making masks and, uh, for veterans and, uh, and, well, I've been making quite a few. But, um, I am making a bunch of, you know, the extras of the police, I'll drop them off the police department and, and at the fire station. Actually, Adam took a couple I had made. Um, I've got the system down pretty good now, so now I can start cranking them out.
Well, thank you.
Our dining room looks like a factory, actually.
Well, Molly, you a 3D painter?
I wish, no, I don't.
That's, what I don't do is computers.
Uh, so, yeah, let's plan on, I think we should probably make a decision, you know, by the first week of May.
That's what I thought. That's what I told the committee, yeah.
So why don't we, um, between now and then, over the next couple of weeks, maybe start brainstorming a few different ideas? Uh, the challenge is gonna be that, you know, even with, uh, even with the motorcade, residents really need to, keep their, you know, it, it's still gonna draw a lot of people out, you know, it's, it's probably, the weather's gonna be nice and, you know, and then again, we, we don't know where we're gonna be by the end of May, um, with this pandemic, so. with this pandemic, so. If anybody has, Molly, do you, I can put my email out there unless you want to put yours out there for anyone that has ideas about an alternative way of celebrating Memorial Day. We're, we're, we're open to hearing them and again, we're going to have to try to find a way to do something that doesn't put anybody's health at risk.
But maintains the.
Yeah, yeah, that, there has to be something because it's been on, I haven't even read the article in that Nahant magazine that I did put out about Memorial Day. So long history in this town of celebrating Memorial Day, probably longer than most towns. So it's important we do something. But I'm, I do read my email, even though I don't do computers. People ask suggestions. They better be good, though.
Better give me your email address.
Oh. Have to give my email address?
If you want, I can hear it.
Can I secretly tell you?
How about this? People can email, people can email me. It's abarletta@nahant.org. So Molly, we'll get together over the next couple of weeks and.
Okay, that's good.
Come up with some type of plan.
I'll be at home.
We'll, we'll get together on the phone.
Okay.
All right. Any questions or comments from the Selectmen on the Memorial Day Parade?
Well, we'll just keep an eye on things, I guess. Thanks, Molly.
Thanks, Molly.
Yeah, let's, we'll, we'll keep an eye on it and see what we can decide.
Richie's the grand marshal this year.
Well, I knew that was going to be on the pod. I saw like you name me grand marshal, it's going to blow up my face. Molly, we'll see what happens. Yeah, I mean, you know, the Memorial Day is, especially I, you do, you do a fantastic job as the chairman of that committee and, and you always do a great job. And, and Memorial Day is, you know, the kickoff, kickoff of summer. And especially the cemetery, you know, Tony and Zach, they do a great job in the cemetery with the flag. Just the cemetery looks absolutely beautiful. Yeah, I, I think we should wait and decide in a couple of weeks, get, see what's going to, you know, I mean, you know. I don't know. You just going to have to wait and see, have further discussion with Molly, Tony.
Yes.
Yeah, our committee is all in agreement to do whatever we need to do, so. And I'll keep them posted. I have a good committee, so keep them posted.
A great committee. You do a fantastic job on Memorial Day too, all the years you've been chairman.
Yeah.
So Tony, why don't you get back with Molly on that one as we get closer, you know, get through April and the first week of May, maybe make a decision.
Okay.
And your recommendation to the board and the board, you know, whatever Molly says.
This already from Sharon Sullivan, a collaboration of students reading Gettysburg.
Yeah, a couple of good ideas coming in through the chat already about printing pictures of what Memorial Day means to them and putting them in their, in their yard. Collaboration, creative collaboration with the students, reading the Declaration of Independence via Zoom. Yeah, we'll, I'll talk to Tony Parentozzi and Kevin Andrews as well from the school about something on that.
Okay, good. Okay, next, the Charles Kelly Scholarship deadline has been.
Before we do that, should we return to the boat launch discussion?
Oh, the boat, oh yes, yeah, the boat launch.
Yeah, sorry about that, yeah. So just for a little background, there is 40 or so boats stored at the, in the wharf parking lot. The agreement, one of them was just mine. The agreement requires that the boats be off the lot by May 15th. There's been a lot of concern about, from people saying, how can we work on our boats when the governor has issued a stay-at-home advisory? So there's been a lot of concern about beating that May 15th requirement. And it's exacerbated a little bit this year because virtually all the boats use Jocelyn Marine as the launch service. And our, the current dates on the schedule for visiting the hut are May 6th and May 9th. So that means, in theory anyway, everyone has to have their boat ready to launch by, by May 9th at the latest. So I've had a lot of conversations and emails about whether it could be delayed beyond the May 15th deadline. So we should take this opportunity to discuss it. So I think, you know, it's important to remember that this is not a private boatyard where the boat owners in the yard can decide when to launch, right? This is, it's a park, it's a public parking lot and we did make sure that it's available for the public to use and park in as soon as COVID-19 allows. Obviously, we have to be mindful of, of the restrictions of, you know, social distancing and so on and make sure we're safe when we're down there. And Rob Tibbo, our Warfenger and Harbor Master did reach out to Jocelyn Marine and find out what their availability is. And right now for dates beyond May 15th, they, they have availability for May 21st and May 26th. So I don't think Rob inquired beyond May, but that's what's available right now. If we wanted to delay beyond May 15th. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that you can't just pick any date. There has to be a date that can be accommodated by the company that's actually going to launch the boats.
And the tides.
What's that?
And the tide.
And the tides, yeah. So, you know, typically they like to choose a, a date that has a high tide, you know, somewhere near noon. But, you know, if we have to get up a little early, that's happened before. So there's a lot of moving parts. So in other words, it's not just about, it's more convenient if we leave our boats in there longer because as soon as warm weather comes, people are going to want to park in the public parking lot. They're going to want to launch their boats from the ramp and park their trailers as allowed in, in the lot there. So it's not as simple as just saying, oh yeah, we can have, you know, an extra month to get our boats ready or, because we, we share it with everyone else, so.
Josh, what's your recommendation?
Well, I think that we, I, I, you know, rather than just discuss it tonight, I think we should pick a date and vote on that tonight because our, our next meeting is until April 30th, which would leave only a week or nine days to get your boat ready for the later of the two days, which is May 19th. So I think we should go ahead and pick a date tonight, recognizing that it could change. I would start with conservative delay of either the 20, May 21st or May 26th, since those are the available days of, for Jocelyn Marine. You know, for all the concerned boat owners, I would love to make it later, but there's at least as many people that use the boat, use that parking lot later on. So that's why I wanted to discuss the Memorial Day Parade too, because Memorial Day is the 25th. So. Maybe we could say, let's say the 20, the 24th or so, which would allow us to capture the launch day of the 21st. Actually, maybe we should say the 21st. Let's say the 21st, use that date and, you know, at our next meeting, reevaluate. So the, if it, you know, if things haven't settled down or it doesn't look like the, the, the governor's going to be able to lift the order on May 4th, we can push it out further possibly at that time. But at a minimum, it would be good to be able to capture that 21st date, I would say.
Hey Josh, Dan Scrip here. Have a quick procedural point, just to make sure that we can enforce this vote if anyone challenges in the future. The Town Administrator Act instills the town administrator with the power to control the public property. And then he makes that recommendation to you guys, and if you guys see it as a warranted matter to change the status quo, then you take the vote. So I just don't want someone down the line to be upset with the vote taken tonight and say, hey, wait a second, it should have come from the town administrator and then to the Selectmen. That's part of the confusion that came out of the Town Administrator Act that we dealt with a few years ago. For the town administrator. So just to make sure we're right down the line, making sure we're doing everything we need to do correctly.
Yeah. So, so from a practical sense, what does that mean to?
I just would give Tony a few days to, to me look into this and then come up with some sort of position and then, and then take it from there. And we can always have a, a quick meeting if we need to vote on an issue for this particular topic. And I'm just looking at, I think it's section, somewhere in section 10, it gives the town administrator the power to, to control public property.
Dan, it's Mark Cullin. So the decision comes from the town administrator. And you're, you're suggesting that we give him a few days to think about this? The town, the Board of Selectmen doesn't necessarily have to vote on this, right?
Exactly. Well, they have to approve what the town administrators recommends. So I guess the approval would have to be a vote, but if, if, yeah, so that you have to approve it, so that would be a vote, yeah.
Do you have to approve it in a certain amount of days?
Geez Jeff, I don't, I don't.
I think it's 30 days. Does it, or his decision is, is final?
Let me, let me, I'm looking at section 10, subsection 1. It doesn't have any day limit in it. It just says the Board of Selectmen, with the approval of the select, said Board of Selectmen. So I don't see any time limitation in that at all.
Okay. I just know there's a time limit with appointments from the town administrator.
Yeah, yeah, no, this is, this is, this is something different.
I mean, Josh, I just want to comment, you know, I'll leave it up to Tony to, his recommendation, but I'm not quite sure. You know, we're talking about the difference between May 15th and May 23rd, what six days is going to give us, a good boat owners that they, they can already get done. But if you feel that, you know, that six days will help, I, I don't have a problem with that. But I'll, I'll wait to hear what Tony has to say.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I'll, I'll wait to hear what Tony has to say too. But it's really, it's really May 9th to the 21st or the 26th, whichever.
I, I got you.
Because the, the Jocelyn, the boat launch is not available on the 15th. Rob's already looked into their availability.
Okay, I hear you, okay.
There's a few comments on there, on, on the chat thing. One is from Rob, actually.
Rob, Rob's on the phone, the Harbor Master. Rob, are you, are you there, Rob?
I'm here, I'm here, Tony.
Okay, do you care to provide some comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, the, the one thing that I, I like about the, the compromise of going out just an extra few weeks is that we, we have to keep in mind that if we tell everybody that, or make this announcement that people don't have to, have to launch their boats, we're basically saying that the, the folks who, who aren't ready, you know, they, they kind of control the flow here. There may be people who want to launch on the, on the 9th. And if they're in the back row, they've got boats in front of them. So we get into a problem as far as saying, well, who, who, who controls this? You know, it's, is it the guy in front or the guy, the guy in back? So I, I like the idea that we're only going out a short distance instead of, say, reaching into June more deeply. I think it's more palatable or should be as far as folks that may have wanted to launch earlier. They're not, they're not waiting that much longer. But at the same time, we, we still are telling these people, if they're in the back row, that they have to wait because the people in front of them aren't ready to launch.
Robbie, this is Mark Cullin. That's a very good point you're making there. The ones that I'm concerned about the most are the commercial fishermen, but all their boats are out front anyway, right?
They're, they're clear to launch whenever they want. Yep, absolutely.
Okay, good, yeah.
They, they typically don't launch with the rest of the group anyway. They'll, they'll arrange their own launch dates.
Well, what are we, what are we holding over for a week? What is the, the, is it May 15th? They have to have now off? That's normal, normal position?
Contractually, it's May 15th.
So why don't we just keep it at May 15th? I, I like May 15th. This way here, what, what are we going to give them, a week or two? I mean, you know.
Well, the, the current launch, the scheduled launch date is May 6th and May 9th. The contract date is May 15th. The proposal or the first, the option in front of us is to go to May 21st and 26th.
We, we would have loved to get Jocelyn in there for, closer to the May 15th date, so that people get that extra time. But they are doing the same thing in several other municipalities such as Salem. Salem is, has a very large lot of boats and they also have to be over the side by May 15th. So they're, they, they use up a lot of the dates that we would love to get.
Robbie, what's your recommendation?
That's a tough one. You know, I, I understand, I understand both, I understand both arguments and I'm sympathetic to both arguments. You know, it, it, it's, I, I think we have a compromise here in saying that we can, we can move it out a week or two. I, I, I think that's probably fair.
Okay, I, I like that recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, if I can jump in, I did want to read on, in the chat group, there's a comment here. Couple of comments, so I'll break it down, break it apart. But the first one is Governor Baker had COVID-19 restrictions in place until at least May 4th. That's correct. Those, I mean, those, my comments to that would be that it's, it is an advisory and that the idea is to keep people in, at home as much as possible. It does allow for people to go outside and enjoy recreation. However, to do so at proper social distancing. I, I guess I would, I would assume that, I would think that folks working on their boats down at the wharf could work together to make sure that they're not on top of each other while working on their boats. Certainly, certainly something to think about there. But the other one is Nahant Police Department is cones blocking car access to the wharf. The cones are there mostly as a deterrent, more so than a closure for non-residents trying to keep the public, the, the number of people up, hanging around in the park or at the wharf down in the current time. So folks that are working, people that have boats on the wharf, you can definitely drive in there to access your boat if you feel comfortable. It takes many days to prepare a boat and they're only a foot from each other. Again, you know, I think that I completely understand and appreciate, you know, that there's a lot of time that goes into getting your boat prepared. I can imagine that, you know, work on the outside of a boat could put you in close proximity to somebody working on the outside of their boat right next door. But, you know, again, I would imagine that everybody understands the, the sensitivity here and could work. The sensitivity here and could work together on that. And hot-dory club members with boats on the wharf were polled due to COVID-19, seventy percent like to delay the launch, I mean, I don't. I, I understand, I can understand that, I agree with, with Rob that there is certainly, you know, that I understand both. Arguments here. I, uh. You know, the, the parking lot is open, you know, it does serve the entire town. Including those that currently, you know, store their boats on the wharf. Once your boat goes in the water, you still. You know, that parking lot is open for your cars as well, to get on your skiff and get out to your boat, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of people in town that. Have boats that, they're getting them ready in their yards, and, you know, it's one of the few. Opportunities for recreation that is a social distancing type piece of recreation. That, you know, want to get their boat out there and, and get on the water, and they don't have any place to park their truck or trailer, so. There's a lot of people in town that want to have access to that wharf that don't currently store. As well, and then, you know, I would like to get this, get a sense of. The lobstermen. Rob, did you say they typically. Launch before or after the remaining boats?
Yeah, they, they're, they're typically in the water well before the, the rest of the, the boats go over, and, and as mentioned. They will arrange their own launch date directly with Jocelyn, Jocelyn will come down and, and put in one or two boats, one or, one or two of the commercial boats on any given trip. So it's, it's really, it's very flexible as far as when they go. And, and they're in the front row, so they can launch anytime.
So they can launch before, anybody can launch before on their own, it's just a matter of. How long you can stay on the wharf, really.
Exactly.
Rob, is there any way to do, is there any way for us to do May ninth and May twenty-first?
Absolutely. Well, yeah, okay, so here, here's, here's where we get into a problem there. It, and, and we certainly could do that, but. Again, we get tangled up as far as some of the boats, you know, that want to go in earlier or on time, let's say. And they've got other boats in front of them that want to wait to the later date. We're doing that anyway on a smaller scale as far as our current schedule, but that's, that's a little bit more tolerable since the two dates are only a few days apart. But, yeah, we could, we could certainly, we could certainly do it.
Well, I mean, I think that. You know, I think we should be making a decision. Whatever, if we're making a decision based on. You know, public health and people having the ability, you know, people having concerns about. You know, being out in the public and working next door to other people working on their boats. That threat or that concern doesn't really change much, you know, it's, or we really don't know. You know, we don't really know what the situation's gonna be between now and the end of May. I mean, we really don't know what the situation's gonna be between now and the end of June. So, you know, for me, I don't really, I don't think that it's a, I don't see the distinction there as far as a public health issue, but I understand. You know, without there being a. A parade and the need to get off the, get off of the, the wharf as soon. You know, if people could have a little bit more time to space things out so that they can work on their boats and get them launched. In an orderly fashion, I can understand that side of it too. But I would think that. Rob, there. There probably needs to be a little bit more. Coordination than typical, right, because you don't want to have. All forty boat owners down there on May sixth or May ninth, you know, you want to split it up so that. People are spaced out.
So I don't know. We could certainly, we, we could work on that, it's, 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 we actually had to do something similar a few years ago because the tides were all wrong for us. And, and we had to literally go down and map out the boats that would go over the side on the first launch date. To, and, and, and hold people to it because the Jocelyn didn't have enough time to get them all in in mass. So we had to, you know, ba- basically break the group in half and, and, and go on the two dates.
Tony, this is Mark speaking. You know, my, my feeling is this, that. I think that you, as the town administrator, having the authority to make this decision, along with consulting with the harbor master. You have a list in phone numbers of all the people who have boats down there. I'm comfortable with you two making the decision and doing what you feel is right. And if, if you need a vote on it, I'm, I'm available, but otherwise, I'm, I'm comfortable with you, Robbie, making that decision. As long as you let all of the boat owners know what that decision is as soon as possible.
Yeah, that's, that's okay with me too, I think my concern. Is that we make the decision quickly because right now, as far as I know based on what. You said, Rob, those are our only two later dates in May. So is it possible to secure those by tomorrow and? And cancel them later if we don't. Or, or aren't gonna use them, say?
Well, it's easy. It's very, it's very easy to, 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 to set the dates, they're, they're open, they're available, we can, we can lock them in. Out of fairness to Jocelyn, I, I, I want to be conservative as far as canceling dates that we've, we've secured, I mean, obviously, they're, they. Could have another call and, and we, we get in the way. And then we drop the date, then they've lost some business, so, but, yeah, we can definitely secure them, and, but at the same time, I would, I would want to. Get together with Tony to decide what dates we're going to drop, let's say, and make sure we, we, what, our next change is our final change.
Right, yeah.
Well, they're all set up to go off at May fifteen, before May fifteen, correct, Robbie?
As it is right now, yes, that's the date that everybody has to be over the side, and the town, through Jocelyn Marine, has, has arranged two dates. If there are boats that didn't want to use those two dates, then, then. There could be special arrangements as far as setting them into a different slot so that other boats behind them could go in, and then, and then. Those, those remaining could launch anytime up to May fifteen.
I'd keep that date, because it's gonna take us a week to clean, clean that parking lot, as we normally do, you know what I mean? And so I, I'd, I'd keep that date, and it's just, you know, that's, they know the date, they know the sequence when they sign up.
Well, let me, let me ask you. Rob, let's, let, why don't we get on, get on a call tomorrow, Rob, and really go through the weeds on this? You know, if it's possible, I know there's a lot of coordination with where current boats are and who would be ready. But, you know, maybe we, we really get into this and make a decision here with. You know, if it's possible to secure the twenty-first as well as May sixth and May ninth, and maybe we. Come up with a plan where. The folks, the boats that are in the front, gotta, gotta go between, gotta go on May sixth or May ninth. The next section has to go. On May ninth, and then, you know, the last section has the option of ninth and twenty-first, something like that. I don't know, but let's take a look at the, let's take a look at how it's set up, who has what boats, and, and try and come up with an idea that way.
Robbie, I've got a, Robbie, I got a quick question for you, that boat that was at the end, it was abandoned?
Yep.
Lady Apple Two.
You want to buy it?
No, God, no, my boat days are over. Do you have a plan to move that or get that out of there?
Uh, I'm afraid to touch it on behalf of the town until we secure the title.
So last, at the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, you guys voted to pursue title of that, of that vessel, so that's what we're doing right now? And as soon as we get the title, we're gonna remove it.
Yeah, I mean, I, maybe there's some young sailor in the hot, I don't know, like, who knows?
I wouldn't want to put a Nahat resident on that boat.
Well, someone, no, I won't.
It's in that bad a shape. I don't trust it.
Okay. Uh, we, we got any more boat launch discussions? Memorial Day, all finished, okay, um, I'm gonna go in, Charles Kelly Scholarship Deadline has been extended to May fifteenth, twenty twenty. And I hope everyone understands that. That's, you know, that's a nice scholarship for someone. Tony, would you make, you put that on the bulletin board or your computer, on the town website?
Yeah, definitely, and just to remind folks, please mail. If you can drop those off at the town hall in the white mailbox out front. Again, we, you know, without any type of. Don't have your information on it, your name on it, I mean. You know, obviously, contact info is good, but don't put your name on it, so this way we can be as unbiased as possible as we're grading the essays. And I'll say that we haven't. We haven't received any submissions yet. So, happy to extend it to May fifteen.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea, yeah. Okay, on Three Bay Ocean View, depending on, you know. We've got a request from Ocean View for a tent.
Mike, the, the owner is on the, is on the call, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to have him?
Hang on, hang on, let me. Is he Mike on the call with us?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't you explain exactly? So the board can vote up or down on it, and maybe, and then the board will have some questions on it, okay?
Sure, absolutely. So we're looking, we're looking to install a seasonal tent. On the terrace portion of the property. That is the portion of the property that is used primarily for the wedding ceremony itself, not a reception, but. Primarily where the couples get married. This would, this would allow us to control the. Couples, the elements during colder late fall months and earlier spring months. Where rain and colder weather tend to be a deterrent to brides wanting to get married outside. So it is our intention that the tent would be done in the same standards that we've cared for the rest of the property. Not a typical tent that, you know, has lots of, you know, exposed ropes and. But one that looks more appealing with a glass wall facing the ocean side. Some interior chandeliers, some heat, and some wooden pews for patrons to spectate. And witness couples' ceremonies. The tent itself would only be put up during late fall and early spring months. And would be completely removed during the beautiful summer months, May through late October. So this is seeking permission for a, a temporary approval during those, during those cozy weather months, as we call them.
Anything else you want to?
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's Mark, Mark Cullen speaking.
Go ahead, Mark.
I have a few questions. I have a few questions. First, a little, a little background, Mike, on this, the reason that you're asking the board of selectmen. For approval of this is because. The land that the building in the terrace sits on is town-owned property, although you own, you own the building and you own the terrace. It sits on town-owned property, and I believe this is a lease agreement between the Ocean View and the town. That requires these types of actions to have approval of the board of selectmen, is that correct, Tony?
Yeah, that, that's, that's correct, and we, we held off on putting it in front of the board of selectmen until. Mike went through the proper permitting procedures, and he has received approval from the Conservation Commission as well as the Building Inspector.
Okay, that's good, Mike, a couple of questions I had, so the purpose of this tent is just for ceremonies and implement weather? There's no music under this tent, or there's no alcohol being served under this tent?
Um, the, our entertainment license and liquor license currently both permit. You know, soft music and liquor to be served out there, we are not looking to put this up for any reason other than doing what we already do. So this is, we're not looking this as a, as a new alternative avenue for any expanded. You know, reception, we're not looking at this for any, you know, dual-action event purpose. We're strictly looking for it to be where folks would get married, have their ceremony. Usually, even though the liquor license does extend to that area, usually that is for a half hour following a ceremony. Where perhaps the bridal party is taking pictures. You know, so perhaps there's some champagne served at that time, but, and in terms of any music, usually it's a harp or. You know, an acoustic guitar, you know, playing a song for a bride as she walks down the aisle. Everything that we're doing is being done with, you know, sensitivities of, you know, you know, neighbors. Sensitivities of staying in the exact same usage style that we're already operating in. So we're not looking to expand or elaborate beyond anything that we're currently doing.
What are the dates that you intend to have the tent up for?
We're, we're anticipating approximately the third week of May, I'm sorry, approximately the third week of March. To approximately the first week of May. And then approximately the third or fourth week of October to approximately first week of January. Those are approximate, we're looking at that late fall, early spring.
Yeah, so about four and a half out of the twelve months?
We, we anticipate that, you know, the effects of the weather, you know, will, you know, certainly. You know, keep that period very honest because, you know, the, the terrace is, is usually impacted immensely by. You know, rocks and, you know, other seawater during, you know, anything outside of that.
And the canvases up all of that period, roughly a third of the year?
The canvas would be, the, the vinyl roof would be up from that March, end of March to first week of May, and then. October, end of October to approximately last week of December, first week of January in that frame.
And the same for the walls and the, the glass, the glass wall?
The, the, the glass wall facing ocean side does not have the ability for us to open or close. All of the peripheral walls do have the ability for us to open and close.
So the glass wall will be there and, and the sidewalls might be open?
They could be, yeah, exactly. Depending on the weather, if we have a beautiful, you know, weekend, you know, yes, we would just open the sidewalls.
Yep, and then I had emailed you a few questions the other day, so I just wanted to kind of go through those. Will the tent frame be up year-round or only when the canvas is up?
The tent frame would not be up year-round, but we would leave the frame only up from the. When we take the tent down that first week of January, we would remove the glass at that time, remove all of the, the sidewalls, remove the roof. But the aluminum frame would remain up without anything on it during the, you know, barren winter months. Ready to receive the, the glass wall and sidewalls and roof, you know, end of March.
Yes, you know, one of my concerns really is, um, the visual impact, uh, particularly from, if you're on the path in the valley, in, in Bailey's Hill area, looking back towards the golf car course and then also if you're on the golf course, looking out towards the ocean. Um, that's one of my concerns. So there's, in this, so there's a little bit of a sacrifice, I think, you know, to the town. And, um, so I'm wondering, is there any benefit to the town of approving this? I'm just saying that, that's, you know, I, how I look at really all these issues, what's, what's the benefit to the town? And so I wonder if you could, uh, add a little bit?
And, and to that note, um, you know, we've certainly, the, the, the way that it stands now, I know that on that path side, um, you know, we do have tall, tall privet hedges, um, that do try to create a sense of intimacy for that area. Um, typically on a weekend, yeah, we also have, um, you know, canvas drapes that again create some privacy, um, so that the brides are not seeing, you know, uh, you know, golf carts and such. Um, so there is, uh, you know, at least during our operational periods in, in the summer, when all of the, uh, privet and, and seagrass, uh, and, and drapes are in, um, you know, there's that same, uh, um, level of, of, of privacy that, that the tent would yield. Outside of that, um, you know, this, uh, certainly, um, you know, would, uh, you know, potentially allow uh, so, for some new opportunistic dates for, uh, you know, couples to get married. And, um, you know, as, as a benefit to the town, that, that does increase, uh, some of, uh, more proceeds to the town in, in terms of locals' mail stacks.
All right. Do you, I mean, this is, of course, it's your business and of course we'd like to see you succeed too. But it, you, do you anticipate it would really get that much use at that time of year? It is heated, right? You said it's heated.
It, it would be heated and, uh, it's very serendipitous that we have started this process. Um, because now more than ever, this tent is important to, uh, our brides that have been displaced. Uh, we've had a tremendous amount of brides, uh, in, in April, May, and now also extending into June, um, that have been impacted, uh, you know, with the, uh, the current landscape. And, uh, having the addition of the tent would, uh, allow us some opportunities to still have these brides get married at the Ocean View. Um, you know, now just, uh, you know, during a, you know, a, a fall date or a spring date compared to, um, you know, the April, May, June of, of this year. So, um, now more than ever, this would really, uh, i- is a pretty important piece to our operation.
Um, in the chat on the, in the, on the Zoom, uh, caller here, uh, Mike, you're getting some anonymous kudos uh, for, uh, your generosity to many groups in town, donate a lot for the school recreation and the Fourth of July.
Thank you, I appreciate, uh, we, we do like being involved and, uh, even earlier with some of the discussions with the Memorial Day, uh, I have some ideas I'd like to chat with you offline, but, uh, thank you for that, Tony.
I gotta ask Dan, this is, um, husband of a lawyer, okay, so this is where my mindset goes. Uh, Dan, this is, this is, this is a lease, uh, with the town on the hot and Ocean View. Do we need specific dates? I, I imagine a
Yeah, I feel much. Yep. What's that, Tony?
Go ahead.
There are really two things here. If the lease actually is open-ended, there's, there's no specific end date to this lease. It goes on in perpetuity as long as Mike uses, or anyone really uses that property as a function hall, okay? So there's no date, you know, it goes for three years, it goes for six years. So it's a bit of an unusual lease in that regard, so that's fine. But, um, there are two things. One, it seems to me that if the Boardman's Selectmen are, are prone to allow this, it should be really in maybe three-year segments, it shouldn't be just forever. It should be at least maybe two or three years. And then after two or three years, we sort of check and see how it went. And if there are any changes need to be made, then fine, make those changes. Or if, if there's no changes needed, fine, then keep going, moving forward. But just to allow with any sort of end date, this makes me as an attorney a little bit concerned about that. With, with the inability to make changes later.
I agree, Dan, and, uh,
Okay, good, good. The second thing is, I think we need specific dates, uh, like the certain, approximately the third week in March. Well, what's approximately, I mean, that could be, that could really be a slippery slope for, for both of us, it really could be. It doesn't really help either one of us. Um, but if we make it in three-year segments, we can put a specific date on what is the third week in March. We can look at the date in 2020, 21 and 22. Hey, Mike, I got a quick question for you.
Sure.
Do you have any weddings scheduled, at least you intend to go forward with in May of this year?
Um, you know, we, we've been really monitoring, uh, these dates very, uh, in, in, in all the, uh, you know, COVID guidelines. Um, most of our weddings, um, have been either canceled or pending the outcome of, 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 of this approval or are exploring re-schedules. Um, we may, um, you know, have some activity in May, but, uh, uh, the majority of the month has been, um, you know, displaced.
Well, then it seems to me then that we really are looking at October for this really to take effect. Or at least maybe before then to, so you can use the, the time to get it, get it installed, so there might be
We were hoping for approvals so that
Whoa, 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 hang on, hang on. You know, if he wants, you know, he's, this guy, Mike, he's been a great asset to the town. And he's helped us in many, many ways. And, uh, I wanna make sure, you know, if Mike wants it, uh, run away, I, I, I happen to tend to agree with him. Is that what you want, Mike?
I do, because it, it would be our intention to utilize this timeframe, um, where our brides have been displaced to, uh, begin the work so that we can photograph the, 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 the tent, have brides come back and, 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 and put their mind at ease and give them a piece of comfort. Um, as you can imagine, uh, a significant amount of, of, a portion of my day, especially, uh, during this time, is spent comforting brides, uh, you know, and, and appeasing and trying to think creatively with families. Um, you know, weddings are such an important day and, and brides are very emotional, um, when they have their mind set on, with a certain vision. So I'm trying to work as quickly as possible to, um, you know, put, uh, you know, concerns at ease. And I absolutely would be, uh, looking to capitalize on the time where, uh, we have a window to, uh, get the work done. Um, so i- i- if, if that was the case, it would likely go up and, uh, come down in probably, uh, a two or a three-week period this year. And then it would go back up, uh, you know, in the fall, um, you know, as I outlined.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So all I was asking actually really was if we can work on specific dates and at the next Board of Select meeting, which is only, what, two weeks from today, we'll have a more specific motion be made, more specific dates, and then it'll be much more precise as opposed to trying to work it out now.
Yeah, Dan, it's Mark, that's, that's fine with me. Uh, I, I do agree with you, I was going to amend my, a motion I was going to make, but I would make it subject to an annual review and approval by the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Mark, I just, I, I, I think we, we should give the approval tonight for a year, a 12 months from tonight, whatever it is, and then, uh, review it and, uh, and, uh, next year sometime. But let's give authorization tonight for, uh, you know, a, a 12-month trial, you know, because, um, this individual's done a great job down there on Willow Road. And we've had very little, no problems whatsoever with him. And he's been great to the town, uh, in so many different ways. And I, I just, everything, we've never had a problem down there at Ocean View. And I think it's fantastic and I think he deserves the, uh, we need to approve this for, you know, let's try it for a year and see what happens. But I think, uh, this kid, uh, he's done a great job down there at Ocean View. Never had a problem. And I, and I live on Willow Road and, you know, the traffic, it, it's very minor, it's, I'm telling you. He's done a great job and so I'm, I'm all in favor of this.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. Uh, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant Ocean View's request for a seasonal tent on the existing outside event space for the period beginning the third week in March to the first week in May and the third week in October to the first week in January, subject to annual review and approval by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? I will second that motion.
I can second the motion.
Okay, I, I, I didn't hear you, you, okay.
Uh, Josh Antrim, second the motion.
Hold on, any further discussion?
Yes, um, I have a lot of concern about, uh, how permanent this is. Uh, I think the annual review is a little disingenuous. I mean, it's, uh, this is a heated structure with a dramatic wooden door entrance and a permanent glass wall with chandeliers, it's not like a temporary, I mean, obviously it's temporary, but it's, it's up for a third of the year and it's, in my opinion visually obtrusive. And, um, so, uh, and I, I understand that Mike has been very generous to the town, so it, you know, it's uncomfortable for me to, um, have to say these things, but, um, come voting time, unfortunately, I would vote no.
Okay, very good. Uh, Mark, uh, we made the motion, is there any other further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Roll call?
Yeah, roll call?
Mark Cullen, aye.
Okay, Josh?
Josh Antrim, no.
Uh, Richie Lombard, aye. Okay, Mike, we're all set there.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the support and, uh, I look forward to, uh, welcoming, uh, folks down, uh, once it is up to, uh, uh, to, to, to see the standards in which we have, uh, have, uh, built this.
You do, continue doing, you continue doing a great job down, down there at the Willow Road, the end of Willow Road.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Mike, I'll, Mike, I'll have, uh, Dan draft some language according to that vote and we'll send it over to you.
Much appreciated, thank you very much. Thank you all, stay healthy.
Um, okay, um, that's it for that, uh, session, uh, we're gonna adjourn, um, and go into an executive session and we will not be coming, um,
Mr. Chairman, I just had a couple of quick things to, to, uh, talk about in my report, if you don't mind.
Oh, okay, well, it wasn't, what, it wasn't on my notes yet, you, you, you know?
It's, it's on the agenda, it's in the agenda there.
Agenda, okay.
It's in the agenda.
Bobby Joe did a, I got the agenda, but Bobby Joe wrote this all out for me, I mean, I'm going right. Go ahead, Tony, go ahead, you're good.
All right, so the first thing on here is the Johnson School Free Lunch Program. Uh, so we've announced this, uh, in the robocall, on, uh, many robocalls, uh, the Johnson School has announced it. Um, it's on our COVID website and our town hall website. I just wanted to, uh, reiterate that the Johnson School Free Lunch Program is not only for elementary school kids that go to Johnson School. It's for all students in the town on the hot. So, so middle school kids, high school kids, um, kids that go to Essex Aggie or other, other schools, um, that are residents in the hot. You can go and pick up a free lunch, uh, at the Johnson School and the information's on our website. Um, do ask that anybody going to pick up a lunch, um, wear masks and gloves. Uh, also Anchor Food Pantry, so the Swan Scott Anchor Food Pantry is available to Nahat residents. If you need, um, if you need food, you need, um, uh, to reach out to them, please take a look at the COVID website or the town, uh, town there, there's information there. You do have to show a Nahat, um, ID when you go pick up. But your license has to have a Nahat resident, uh, an, an hot address on it when you go to pick up the food. Um, for those that, uh, need help picking up the food, the Council on Aging, uh, has a list of volunteers that are willing to go, uh, pick up that food at the Anchor Food Pantry for you. Just reach out to Linda Peterson in the Council on Aging. Um, my next one is actually the Council on Aging and Linda Peterson is on the call. Um, and I just wanted to say that, uh, they are doing a remarkable job. We, uh, have been able to get food out to seniors, uh, Monday through Thursday and then food from, uh, Captain Seaside for free to seniors on Friday. It's, it's been working really well. I'm really, I, I really appreciate Linda and Ann and the, and the folks that have been helping out down there. Uh, we also this week received, um, received, uh, let me see, 23 boxes from the Salvation Army of food and supplies, canned goods, uh, vegetables, fruit, uh, that we were able to hand out through Council on Aging to, uh, the seniors that, uh, receive, receive lunch there. So Linda, I wanna, I'm gonna unmute you if you're, I gotta find you on here, if you're still on here.
I don't see her on there anymore.
Oh, she was on here, okay. Well, uh, again, I just wanna, you know, express what a great job they're doing. Um, the, you know, Linda and Ann and Ann Callahan, I mean, they, they're making daily calls to all senior citizens, uh, that are enrolled in the program, uh, wellness checks, seeing if they need to go to the, uh, grocery store or the pharmacy to pick up food. Um, some of those, some of those calls actually have come in through the hotline and then transferred to Linda. So, uh, it's, I would say it's been a, it's been a, um, a great success to this point.
That's good news. Great news. Um, they're a great team.
Next on my report is the stimulus package and the 2020 tax delays. We put up, we posted a, um, an article on the COVID-19 website for, for residents to take a look at that details, uh, the stimulus package that was passed, um, uh, Tuesday, April, or went into effect, March 27th. And there's a number of, there's a, there's a ton of links on there, um, to, uh, programs for, that were established through the CARES Act. It's a $376 billion, uh, piece of legislation for loans, um, small business relief, uh, residents that are eligible for economic impact payments. So there's a ton of good information there. And I'll save time by just, just referring people to the, the, uh, article that we posted up on Tuesday on the COVID-19 website. And if you have any questions, um, please don't hesitate to reach out to us on that, we're happy to help out. And then I'll just, again, I'll re, I'll reiterate that on the COVID website, you can put your email in there uh, to get, to get notified when updates get posted to the website. And then not on my list is, uh, July 4th and Summer Park League. And Jen McCarthy, I am unmuting you, uh, is on the call. Jen, do you wanna, do you wanna, uh, kind of restate what you put in the email earlier today?
Yeah, I'll try to be real quick and I definitely don't need answers tonight. But, um, I do need to start thinking, we usually hire four or five teenagers from town for Summer Park Program. And, um, eventually maybe at the next meeting, I would like, um, to get permission to do that, um, with obviously letting them know that the program is dependent on whether in July and August, if we will be able to meet, um, as a group in the park, if it's safe. So, um, So if you could all think about that for your next meeting. And then also the 4th of July, we need to start thinking about that because I usually do start fundraising towards the end of April, the beginning of May. I have talked to the, the company and they are willing to be flexible with the date. So if we were able to sign the contract, but come the middle of June or even the beginning of July, the beginning of June or the middle of June, we feel that it's still not safe for us to maybe have a big celebration like that. They would be willing with no penalty for us to move the date maybe to Labor Day weekend, or I was even thinking Columbus Day weekend or Veterans Day weekend, depending how far out we need to go. After, if we had, couldn't do it at all this year, there would be a penalty of 20%. But ultimately, that's like $3,700, which in the whole scheme of things is, I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's not a huge amount that we couldn't, I could fundraise for that. So I just wanted to put that information out there so that hopefully for the next meeting I can get on the agenda and that will give you guys some time to think about it.
I think, I think both your suggestions are great. I think having potential summer program staff applying for jobs to have them lined up in case we are able to run forward with the program. It's a good idea. But yeah, of course, you got to really, really make sure they understand that, you know, the, it's subject to the Park League being launched. And then the other part there on the 4th of July fireworks, I think it's a, I think we should move forward with signing the contract and then reevaluate the date as we get closer to June. And if we have to postpone, I mean, many other communities have done that already. I think Marblehead, Somerville.
Yep.
You know, I don't think that some of those communities have much larger logistical and planning needs than we do. So that's probably a big factor in their decision. So I, I would be, I'd be, I think we should sign the contract and try and have a, try to get a show in at some point in the year.
Yeah. I think it's good just to give people hope too and sort of some sense that at some point we will return to normal, you know, hopefully.
Mr. Selectmen, any of the selectmen have any comments on either of those points?
Whatever Jen says, I'm going to go with her.
Thank you, Richie.
Whenever you send the fireworks out, there'll be a lot enough people there to watch it, whether it's in July or August or whenever. Don't worry about people showing up.
Yeah, yeah. Don't worry about that, Jen. She just, you decide. We're going to back you.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, Jen, thank you very much for raising the money and then having a great show as usual. You always do the best.
It's my pleasure. And I'd like to just give a little shout out to our fireworks company, Ocean State Pyrotechnics. They actually just made a very nice donation of hand sanitizer to our police and fire departments.
Oh, wow.
They make it and it's a very strong solution. And so he called me up to see if they wanted them. And I talked to both chiefs and they said, certainly bring it over. So last weekend they made a nice donation.
Oh, wow. That's good to know. We should, we should, Tony, we got to send a thank you note to them. That was very nice of them.
Yeah, I'd like to get their names. I'm, I'm trying to keep a list of all volunteers or people that are donating during this time so that we can, you know, do some type of thank you once we get through all this. But so Jen, if you can email me, well, I think I have, they probably have their contact info anyways, but I'll.
I'll email it to you anyways.
Yeah, just so I can add it to the list.
Okay.
That's very nice. Good job, Jen.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Mr. Chairman, do you want to, there's, there is a comment here for Citizens Forum if you want to move to Citizens Forum.
Sure, let's go.
All right. Comment is, can the Board of Selectmen provide an update on their letter that was submitted to NEPA on the request to extend the public comment period on Northeastern's final environmental impact report? Josh and I jumped on a call with NEPA today. Josh, do you want to take the lead?
All right, muted myself. Yeah, as Tony mentioned, we were on the, on the phone with Aaron Fiery of NEPA, talking about the request for extension of the comment period. We submitted that letter on April 23rd, I think. And, no, that can't be right.
March.
March 23rd. So I guess the short story is, it seems highly likely that we will be getting an extension. There's a little bit of legal review that NEPA had to do. We're hoping to get a response from them tomorrow, but if not tomorrow, then Tuesday because Monday is a holiday. I very much hope it's tomorrow because Tuesday is the 21st and the comment period currently expires on the 24th. So that doesn't leave much of a window. But chime in if you disagree, Tony, but it seemed highly probable that we would get an extension. And the only thing remaining would be whether that's the 30-day extension or a 60-day extension or less.
Spot on. I'll add that, you know, every extension that we've requested in the past for the draft or the original, you know, anyways, the, any, any extension we've requested in the past has been, it's, it's the, the submitter that makes that decision. So Northeastern actually has granted those extensions in the past. That request goes to Northeastern. What Josh is referring to is the SJC passed an order for all dates in statute to be told until May 4th, in which they, it would have a 30-day extension from May 4th. So our attorneys are pushing NEPA that that, that the 30-day, the comment period in statute for the final environmental impact report falls under that SJC ruling and that the secretary must grant a 30-day extension from May 4th, which would bring it to.
June 3rd.
June 3rd. Our original request was to extend the date from April 24th until June 23rd. So there, the secretary may have the discretion to, we believe she has no discretion in going 30 days from May 4th to June 3rd and has discretion to go beyond that another 30 days. So we're asking for that, that extra, but we believe that we should get an extension at least until June 3rd. So we're putting, making that push to NEPA and hopefully we'll get a response from them soon because the current deadline is, is April 24th.
Tony, this is Mark. First, I want to thank, thank you and Josh for taking that call today and advocating on behalf. It sounds like we will get an extension, the situation, we'll, we'll see. But I want everybody in the town to take this opportunity to make sure that they write and express their feelings and opinions to the secretary regarding this issue. It's very important. The past commenting periods that we've had, several hundred people in the heart have written letters and I'm sure that as many this time will also. So use this opportunity, this extension as an opportunity to get your letters in.
Great point.
I was going to add, just for those that are going to potentially write in to the secretary, the Supreme Judicial Court Order of, Order 144, Order Regarding Court Operations Under the Exigent Circumstances Created by the COVID-19 Pandemic, dated April 1st, 2020. And it's in Section 12 of that order. So it's the Supreme Judicial Court Order Number 144, dated April 1st, and it's Section 12 that we believe tolls the comment period 30 days beyond May 4th. I think we're going to be writing and we, we sent an email to, to, to the secretary. But you know, it might make sense for us to put that into a letter form as a secondary, as a follow-up letter to our original request and then we could get that on our website for people to see.
Great idea.
Good idea, Tony.
Yeah, Tony, are you referring to the request for extension or the, the letter, our actual comment letter?
Our, we, we submitted a letter requesting an extension and it's on our website now. I'm saying we should submit another letter just to formalize our email that we sent today stating that the Supreme Judicial Court Order requires an extension of 30 days beyond May 4th anyways. And then we can cite that in the letter and throw it on our website. So any other, you know, folks who want to make that request can cite, you know, have the information from our letter.
Right. And in addition.
It would be two letters, it would be two letters from us to the secretary pushing for an extension. One was our own 60-day request and the other one is based on the, on the Supreme Court order.
Right. And then, of course, we need to complete our comments.
Yeah.
That's the important.
Yeah, of course, of course. Right now, we're trying, we're trying to buy some more time. But I was just thinking, you know, with Mark's comments about encouraging others to submit a request for an extension, if we put ours, if we put this information on our, on a, you know, in a letter and put it on our website, then other folks can, you know, use that to put together their own letter. Any others, I don't see anything else in the chat for Citizens Forum.
Okay. Is that it, Tony?
That's it.
Okay. Is there any other, before I'm going to move that we go into executive session in a minute here, is there any other questions on the regular meeting from Josh or Mark?
No.
I'll have that, Chairman.
Okay. Gentlemen, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to go into an executive session in accordance with Mass General laws 38, Section 21, to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation and to not reconvene an open session. Is there a second?
I second that. Mark calling.
I second, second for the discussion.
Just question, do we have to state what that litigation is?
Yeah, we should. We should state that. It's already stated in the agenda. So it's out there.
Yeah.
It's in the agenda, yeah. It's discussing the comedy versus the town in the heart, the litigation. Okay. MCAD, the docket number is, you know, on the agenda there. So that's what, that's what we're going to be discussing in the executive session.
And Richie, would you agree that if we had this discussion in open session, then it would be a detriment to the town's position in the, after litigation?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Okay.
Okay.
So vote?
Okay, we're going to, okay, adjourn the meeting and we're going to executive session. For some reason, I don't have a, Tony, can you call me right back after we hang up here? Do you give me the telephone number? I don't have a telephone number for that executive session.
Yes, I will call you.
All right. So we got to quickly vote to do that, right? We just got as far as seconding and then the comments. So.
Yeah, the most made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Josh Antrim, aye.
Mark calling an aye.
Richie Lombard, aye. Okay. We'll see you in two minutes in the executive session. All right, gentlemen?
Yep.
You both, you both have the numbers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Tony, give me a quick call so I can, for some reason, my number's here. Okay. See you in a few minutes.
All right.